Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members and city officials. It's our home audience. I'd like to welcome you to the November 12th City Council meeting. Tonight we have five items on our agenda. At this time, Mr. Fawcett, would you please continue with the roll call of members? Corcoran.
Here.
Fairchild.
Here.
Florima. Heinz.
Here.
Kearney.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Tattman.
Here.
At this time, do we have a motion to excuse our absent members? Ms. Pearl.
I'd like to make the motion to excuse Patrick and Joel Farima.
We have a motion, seconded by Mrs. Kearney. Roll call on that motion. Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
And we have excused our absent members this evening. If everybody would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The minutes from the previous meeting have been distributed for review. There's no changes, additions, corrections. We have a motion to accept the minutes by Mrs. Neal, seconded by Ms. Corcoran. Roll call on the motion to accept our minutes. Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
And we have accepted our minutes from the previous meeting. At this time, we have reports from our committees. Who would like to go first? Mr. Tattman.
Thank you, President Arnold. The Engineering Committee does not have anything on the agenda yet, but I think everybody got a copy of the legislation 16-136 on the Vacating Alley. Should be on the back of your agenda tonight. And at this time, I'd like to uncommit it.
I have a motion to uncommit that legislation, seconded by Ms. Fairchild. Roll call on that motion, please. Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
And you said that the legislation has been attached to the agenda that was handed out for this evening?
I believe I've got a copy of it on the back of their...
If that's the case, it meets the three-day receipt rule and can be voted on this evening.
All right. Well, first off, we have to amend it because they ended up dotting their i's and crossing their t's on this.
Okay.
And I believe what it was, Norris signed off on the giveaway of the alley.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Fawcett?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
And they changed their section to reflect that.
Okay. So that's in the pattern, that it's with ordinance as what, ex cipe?
Correct.
Okay. So I move to amend this legislation so we can go forward.
I have a motion to amend the legislation to move forward, seconded by Mrs. Neal. Roll call on that motion. Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
And we can go forward tonight and read this?
It will be, it will come out as first reading where it was committed, yes.
Okay. And since this has taken so long, I would like to go ahead and, at appropriate time, request that we have a three-read rule.
Okay.
All right. Now, I got the delinquency report on my committee. Item 16-136, and we're going to have that tonight. That's the vacate of the alley. That, we'll read that tonight and hopefully pass it. 17-057, change back to two-way traffic on Second Street. I still do not have the review from the Engineering Department, so I do not know at this time what's going on. So that's still active. 17-059, approved funds for signs for truck routes. And actually, that's been out of committee, but I guess I gotta send you a note when I take something from the committee. 17-068, review of sidewalk ordinances. Our committee could not agree on anything on this one, so we, well, this is two, there's two different things. I'll have to back up. The, if this is out of committee, but what we found is that the ordinance do reflect what, that the property owners are responsible for the sidewalks. 17-139, address speeding issues on Allen Avenue. And actually, this is still under review, and we've got the new stop signs that reflect speed. So I think until we get the information back on this item, it's still active, but it'll have to carry on for next year. And that concludes my report.
So 17-068 also was voted out of committee?
Uh, yes.
Or is it?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, all right. Very good. Thank you for the, thank you.
That clears me up for the year.
For the update.
Unless somebody sent me something else.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, President Arnold. Development Committee had a meeting just prior to the council meeting on assignment 17-029, which is the food truck legislation. And I'm happy to report that we made a few changes. We changed the hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. till midnight. And I'm trying to think the other changes we took. Three food trucks could be in without having a special permit for a food truck instead of two. We changed the hours that pantene truck could be in a parking lot from one and a half hours to three hours. So there were a few minor changes that seemed to, everybody agreed upon. So I am going to submit those changes to the Law Director's Office. I'm going to ask that this legislation be uncommitted tonight. And then, next council meeting, this will come back on the agenda at a third read and hopefully we can get this passed at that time.
I have a motion then to uncommit the legislation.
Okay. So, motion to uncommit the legislation.
Seconded by Mrs. Kearney. Roll call on that motion. Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
As we discussed earlier, the changes were basically number changes. They're minor, the basic part of the legislation is all still intact. So once you get all the verbiage changed correctly, it will come back at the next meeting at the three read.
Okay. Two other items that I want to report on, item 18-097, which is the option agreement with the Dina Health System that is in the Law Director's Office and should be on the next agenda. 18-037 is a land lease to the Ohio Army National Guard for property that's near Camp Sherman. And we had been waiting on Colonel Daniel Shank to get back with us with a survey of the area. So I received that from them Wednesday last week. I've forwarded that survey to the Law Director's Office. So as soon as, as soon as their office reviews that survey, we should see that legislation move forward. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Yes. Mr. Pearl?
I've got a lot today here, so bear with me. Filling in for Joel Farima and Safety Service. Safety Service has one item on tonight's agenda, which is a second reading, that is item number three, which adds parking infractions to codified ordinances, and that will continue on to a third read. Filling in for Pat Patrick in the Utilities Department, there are two items on tonight's agenda. The first item is at third reading and is appropriating $16,000 to fund the Transit Operations Manager position for the remainder of the year. And this goes with item number two, which is at third reading, adding section 123.075 titled Operations Manager and amending sections 123.072 entitled Transit Department Personnel within the codified ordinances of the City of Chillicothe and authorizing the hiring of an Operations Manager. I was speaking with the mayor, and the amount that is listed, the 16,000, since we will probably not see this position filled until much later this year or beginning next, we probably will not need the 16,000 dollars, and we need to make an adjustment on that amount. So I'm going to ask at the appropriate time that we not read item number one. So I will make a motion that we do not read item number one tonight, so that we can make that adjustment. It'll be a lesser amount.
Seconded by Ms. Fairchild. Roll call on that motion. Corcoran.
Yes.
Fairchild.
Yes.
Heinz.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
And we will not read number one this evening.
Now, just on to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Item number four, which is at first reading, suspending the maximum hours established for one part-time security officer for the Chillicothe Municipal Court for the remainder of 2018. This came about because of people being out due to illness, and so they need this employee that's been filling in to have some more hours, otherwise he's already reaching the amount that he's capped at. And they have money in their budget for this, so it won't be an addition to the city. At the appropriate time, I will ask that we waive the three-read rule for this purpose. Item, item number five, which is at first reading, is an ordinance extending the Chillicothe Municipal Court Victim Witness Assistance Program and accepting grant monies received through the Victims of Crime Act and, which is VOKA and also the State Victims Assistance Act. And one of those two, which is the VOKA, is for $37,333 to be sent, and that is shared equally, and there's a matching of $9,333.38 to be shared equally between the City of Chillicothe and the Ross County Commissioners. So it would be a total of $4,666.69 as our matching. There is no matching on the SVAA portion of the grant. And I will ask at the appropriate time that we do waive the three-read rule so that we can accept these grants. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl. Other than the force assets, Mr. Arnold?
Yes, I have one item from Community Affairs, request for legislation to review the city codified ordinance dealing with homeless and begging and make changes as necessary to comply with ACL request. The committee met two weeks ago and reviewed the present ordinance that we have. And in talking with the chief, the Police Department, we have not used that ordinance for ever, quite a while, because it, those areas are taken care of within two other offices. So he does not see any reason why we should maintain it.
And your committee is...
My committee will get back together and decide exactly how to proceed with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Fairchild.
The Human Resources Committee met this evening on assignment 18-095 in regards to establishing rates of pay for the non-bargaining unit members of the city. There were a couple of questions. We met last week and had a final meeting tonight, so that will be headed to the Law Director's Office to get that established for hopefully the next meeting to have its first read. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other committee reports? No, we'll move on to our reports from our officials. Our mayor, Mr. Mup Eadie.
Thanks, President Arnold. Commenting on tonight's agenda, I'd support Councilman Pearl's suggestion to not read item number one. It's November 12th. Maybe no need at all to appropriate money in that item, but we can regroup in two weeks and decide if it's necessary at that time. If it does get appropriated, I'm certain it will be less than the amount that's allocated. That said, I would ask for council's support of item number two. I think that that position makes a lot of sense, and the department should help with operational efficiency as well as management over there. On item number three, I just want to revisit the idea that we don't have a appropriations request that goes with the parking legislation yet. One thing, one possibility that was commented on was that it be an in-addition-to type of position with the Parking Bureau. The other was that external people do the work. I just bring it up because it occurs to me that it might be something we included in, non-bargaining ordinance if it happened that way. But it's just something that might be defined as an unfunded mandate if it's passed, but then there's no accounting for it. So I just want to bring to the attention that we're making progress there, but the execution of the plan is still in this way. Councilman Tattman, I did send you a report. It was in a zip format, so it was compressed. It was a large file. I made it smaller. So if you didn't get it, I can, I know other people got it, so I know that I'm not, I haven't lost my mind. But I will print a copy and have it available for your pickup. I believe it will be discussed at the Downtown Development Commission on Wednesday, but the Engineering Department has done a very nice write-up of many, if not all, of the parameters to consider regarding the potential conversion of Second Street from one-way to two-way. It's a good and interesting read, and I can attempt to forward it via email again, but I'll also print a hard copy for you. I tried sending it once. It was too big, and I zipped it. Try sending it again, so...
This is zipped on through?
Right. It's too efficiently zipped. I'd like to thank the Development Committee, Councilman Neal, for the approach to the food truck legislation. I think that, I wasn't able to attend tonight's meeting, but I know that there were concerns about the language as it stood, and it sounds like those concerns were addressed tonight. Obviously, it hasn't passed yet, but I think that that's the way government's supposed to work. We're supposed to listen to people. I, for one, am just eager to have more food trucks in town because I like to eat. So let's get that passed and get some more food in town. I think our budget review sessions are complete. We have a meeting this Wednesday that will factor in somewhat to the budget process. But I did have some specific questions about specific capital projects and a couple of different budgets. What I would suggest is, if you'd like to do further review or analysis of any of those items, or in light of the facilities study presentation we'd like to meet, we could do a committee meeting or committee meetings to discuss in more detail, and I can, with advance notice, try to make sure that department heads are available and that sort of thing where relevant. But I think that in terms of the actual meeting process, we're done relatively early. I think we've gone later, I'll put it that way. But I think that'd be a good way to follow, go on forward. And then, today was the day that the city, yesterday was Veterans Day, today the city was closed in observance of Veterans Day, and I'd just like to take a minute to thank our veterans, family, friends, fellow Chillicotheans and Ross Countyans, and all our fellow Americans who are veterans who've served us for all that they have done for us and continue to do. That concludes our...
Thank you, Mayor Pinn. Our auditor, Ms. Pat Maggie, is not here this evening, but our auditor director is, Mrs. Rufford. Do you have anything this evening?
Thank you, President Arnold. I just echo the mayor's sentiments and thank all the veterans that served and tell you that not all of Chillicothe was closed today. Municipal Court is open. When Municipal Court's open, so are we. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Myself, I have a few things to mention. I, again, have written down here that I'd like to salute our veterans, both past and present, and also the active members that are serving our country right now and protecting our freedoms, which I sure hope continue with our country in the future. I'd also like to thank Mr. David White, who a few weeks ago sent me an official Ohio map, roadmap. I'm working on trying to put it into some sort of a frame to be able to hang it somewhere in council chambers. I could not find a copyright date on it anywhere. It's kind of unique in the fact that there's not a single interstate on this map. No 71, no 75, 70, none of that. And it's just kind of interesting to have all the roads crisscrossed and like a spider web across the state, but they were just roads back then. It was kind of nice. So thank you to Mr. White, and when I get it, I'll show it here to everybody. I had a list of assignments that I sent out for us to kind of go over. I'm trying to wrap things up here towards the end of the year. I have some of these assigned, I sent it out to everybody. These were all assignments that were older than 90 days. Actually, some of them are quite older than 90 days. I'd just like to get some sort of an update, find out where they're headed. I'd like to get some of this stuff wrapped up before the end of the year if we can. I have a special assignment out there hanging on non-discrimination. Mrs. Kearney is our committee chairman on that. I wondered if you could give me an update on that, Mrs. Kearney?
Well, actually, at this point, the only update that I can give you is that I have retrieved the information from years ago, I guess, when it first started, and have been reading the language and what have you in it. And I don't see any way that we would be able to address that within the next month. So it probably would be carried over into 2019. Then we can decide whether or not we want to just totally look at it or rework it or whatever. But at this point, I think it would also be very good for us to take in consideration some of the things that are already unbooked federally and see if we can, if we're going to make any changes, see that those changes would be able to affect those based on some of the things that have gone to court.
So you don't expect any committees, committees until after the first...
Sure, right.
The rest of you have addressed, actually, several of them that I had out here. I had some to ask for Joel. He's got a few out here, but obviously, he's not here this evening. And Mr. Pearl, you have a committee assignment on reviewing council rules, or will there be an upcoming committee meeting on that to talk about that, anytime soon?
Yeah, probably once we get our budget meetings knocked down.
Okay. Very good. And that's really it. I will make, I'm anxious to see that zip drive on what the study on Second Street came out to the, if you would. And I'll make a personal observation. I happened to come up Second Street the other night, and there was an event going on at the Majestic. And as I came up Second Street, there's three cars lined up in front of the Majestic that were all lined up, letting people out to go into the Majestic. And I kind of envisioned myself, now if that was two-way traffic and there was traffic coming head-on, how you wouldn't be able to get down the street literally and be blocked until everybody got out of their cars. So that is something that I see repeatedly every time Majestic has an event going on. Anyway, that's just my own observations. And that's all I have. So we move on to public participation at this point. I, we do have to sign in the sheet, which I see, we only have one person, Mr. Davis, I know you. I know that you are well aware of the rules, since you've sat in the seat before, that we have five minutes for a presentation. And since you've signed in with your address there, you want me to give you the address for the talk. Please, go ahead.
Well, my name's Alan Davis, resident of Chillicothe. Last week, I happened to notice an article in the paper, and it talked about the Municipal Court wanting two additional staff members. And I read through, and it seemed that they justified very, very much why there was a need for it. But something stood out. When I saw that the salary was $37,200 and the total salary and benefits was going to be $80,000, I said, that's got to be a mistake. Then when I started thinking about it, I started to think, well, maybe it's not. But that means that the fringe benefits are more than the salary itself on a staff of a position like that. Also, within that salary, you have time for, or paid for vacation, holiday, and sick. So it means that probably out of the $80,000 employee, you're out about $30,000 for actually work time. So as I thought about it, and I said, well, maybe this would be a good learning experience that I could, or educational experience. So I put together a piece where I have two statements of fact, then my observation from it, and then questions that I think, as city council and administration, you should be asking based on those facts. So again, on the municipal court, one of its things like, what percent of the general fund salaries and benefits is currently going for non-work time and benefits? And then, on each one of them, I put, what financial management tool would you use to help answer that question? And obviously, that one, it's ratio analysis. How has that percentage changed in 2013? There was a lot of effort in 2012 and 2013 to get some control over our finances, and one of the areas was the salaries and benefit area. So has it gotten better or worse since then? Well, again, trending would be a good thing. How will that percentage change over the next five years? That's critical to the financial success of the city. Well, a five-year plan is the tool that you use for that. Are the city's non-work times and benefit costs in line with other comparable cities? Benchmarking, and one of those benchmarking tools would be an efficiency audit that the State Auditor's Office offered to do for free since we're on fiscal caution. The second scenario has to do with the condition of capital, which is our physical assets, our building equipment and stuff. We've now had two years in a row where we've been in a critical situation on that grading. We're one of 20 of 220 cities that have reached that lofty position of having a critical rating on it. And since 2003, that ratio's gotten worse every year but one. So some of the questions, I've put down some questions, and the tool that might help with those, answering those questions. So then, you know, you say, well, you know, I would anticipate that the response would be, well, and we're doing much better, we have a lot more cash on hand than we did in the past. So I put down some trending on some really important items for the city. Cash and equivalents for the government type... Cash and equivalents for the government-type activities is up over six million dollars from where it was in 2012. And obviously, we all know, that's a real positive trend, and one the city should be congratulated on. Liabilities, not including the pension, however, are up four million. So that means we've used debt and leases and other liabilities to help supplement that cash. And the net investment in our capital assets, so how much our building equipment and our vehicles are worth, and infrastructure worth, has gone down by ten. So you add the four million and the ten million together, that's fourteen of a negative trend, and the cash is up six. So the overall trend on those key items is, is not good, but again, maybe a reason to use some of those tools. And of course, then the pension liability has gone up by forty-five percent the last three years. And so the question that council and administration has to answer soon is, are these trends going to continue or not? And then I just sum up by, a little over five years ago, the State Auditor's Office came down and tried to work positively with the city on its fiscal caution and said, you ought to have a five-year financial plan, you should have a comprehensive capital asset plan, and we'll do an efficiency audit for benchmarking. That was over five years ago. I'm not aware, now again, I'm not aware of everything that happens, that any of those have been implemented in five years, and the question I would have for the administration and council is, why not? So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anybody else? Just kidding. Not seeing so. We'll move on to old business. Does anybody have a old business they'd like to bring up this evening? Not seeing any old business. The questions and correspondence that's been received by the board?
Mr. President, I received, first of all, a letter from Houghton Terrace, affiliate of National Church Residences. This is in reference to a residential rental development located within a one-half mile radius of Chillicothe. Houghton Terrace was constructed in 1994, consists of a two-story building on a three-point four-six acre site. It is an existing forty-six unit housing development, and an elevator-served apartment building for elderly aged sixty-two and older, located at fifty-five Sunrush Boulevard. There's a proposed rehabilitation of the property, and this letter discusses council's right to submit comments or to make objections, and that's been distributed to the members of council. Secondly, I received a notice from the Ohio Division of Lipper Control in reference to the issuance of this permit to Family Dollar Stores in Ohio, building businesses as Family Dollar at seventy-two North Bridge Street, north end of the building only. And lastly, I received another notice from the Ohio Division of Lipper Control in reference to the issuance of a permit to ADT Ohio LLC, one sixty-three North Bridge Street. It's a transfer from America's Pizza Company LLC, DBA Pizza Hut, of the same location to ADT Ohio LLC. And that's all I have.
Mr. President? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Moving on, any new business that anybody would like to bring up this evening? Not seeing any. Then we move on to our committee assignments and our meeting dates. Does anybody have any meeting dates upcoming that they'd like to announce and roll forward on about this time? The assignments that we've received since our last meeting is for finance, a request for legislation to accept the VOKA grant with a match in coordination with Ross County, and that is on our agenda. Finance, a request for legislation to spend, suspend the maximum hours for a part-time security office in order to work for the remainder of the year, and that's on our agenda. For utilities and transit, a request for legislation to accept and appropriate two thousand, seven hundred, ninety-eight dollars and ninety-four cents that was received from a public, public entities' risk services for damages incurred at a recent break-in at the transit facility. Also, for utilities, combination of transit, request for legislation to appropriate the purchase of a snow plow for snow removal at the facility. And safety service, a request for legislation to authorize the city to enter into an agreement with the Ross County Commissioners for indigent defense for fiscal year 2019. And that's all we have, the committee assignments. At that point, then we move into our legislation, and we're not reading number one, so we'll move on to number two this evening. And Mr. Paulson?
Third reading of an ordinance adding section one twenty-three point zero seven-five titled Operations Manager, amending section one twenty-three point zero seven-two titled Transit Department Personnel Within the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chillicothe and Authorizing the Hiring of an Operations Manager. Third reading.
Third reading, so we'll vote on that. And then we'll read Mr. Paulson. Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
And that has passed. That ordinance has passed. Item number three, second reading of an ordinance adding chapter three fifty-two, parking infractions, to the codified ordinances of the City of Chillicothe. Second reading. That will move on to the next meeting. Item number four, first reading of an ordinance suspending the maximum hours established for one part-time security officer for the Chillicothe Municipal Court for the remainder of 2018, and declare an emergency. First reading. Mr. Pearl?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we please waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, second by Mr. Hines. Roll call on that motion. Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
The motion has been approved. Roll call on the legislation. Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number five, first reading of an ordinance extending the Chillicothe Municipal Court Victim/Witness Assistance Program, accepting grant monies received through the Victims of Crime Act and the State Victims Assistance Act, and declaring emergency. First reading. Mr. Pearl?
At this time, I'd like to please waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, second by Mr. Hines again. Roll call on the motion. Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Okay. Added item number six.
First reading of an ordinance approving the recommendation of the Planning Commission to vacate an alley located west of North Bridge Street and north of East Water Street within the City of Chillicothe, and dedicating a new section adjoining the property. First reading.
Mr. Tatman?
At this time, I would like to request that we waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, second by Mrs. Neal. Roll call on the motion. Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Unless anybody has anything to add this evening, that concludes our business. Do I have a motion for adjournment? By Mr. Tatman, second by Mrs. Neal.
He's not here, I guess I'll be...
You'll fill in for Pearl. Roll call on the motion to adjourn. Corcoran?
Yes.
Fairchild?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Tatman?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Unless anybody has anything to add this evening, that concludes our business. Do I have a motion for adjournment? By Mr. Tatman, second by Mrs. Neal.